All right, it is Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty P M. So, regular Board of Selectmen meeting. Due to an error in the town clerk's office, our agenda was filed. It was posted on the board outside, but it was not posted on the website until today. So, the requirements for hybrid meeting require that it be both at the location of the town hall and online. We will not be taking any action. We can simply have discussion tonight. So, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance. Approval of minutes, we will hold over until our next meeting. So, all ones present to speak, is there anyone in the room present to speak? Identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to two minutes.
Okay, well, I'll try to get it in in two minutes. The Tanaka one twenty-five Basin Road upcoming queue tonight is Chairman of the Emergency Services and Efficiency Committee. We have a number of things that we'd like to talk to you about. One is that the mold remediation has been completed at Station thirteen. However, they do need to get some temporary insulation and heat in there, which should be covered by what was left from the money appropriated for the mold remediation. However, it needs to be repurposed. And we're hoping that the Board of Selectmen have are willing to support us in that. We're going to, I believe it's coming up in front of the Board of Finance this week. The second thing is that with the station being changed the way it is, whether we go with repair or renovation, the needs of the town for fire service need to be evaluated carefully. What was happening is we were trying to get both Willington One and Willington Hill together to make sure that we had all the required services without duplication to make sure that we did things as efficiently as possible. However, we're not going to be able to wait on Willington Hill to complete their project before we move forward with thirteen. That needs to be done in a much more timely fashion. So, over at the last meeting, we took a vote. It was moved that we send a request to the Board of Selectmen for thirty thousand dollars for a station location study and need study. It's that's a federal study. I believe that Selectmen McCoo may be able to help describe this selection better. The reason we're asking for thirty thousand dollars is because that's been set at twenty-nine plus as a standard nationwide for these studies to occur. This is important to our townspeople because if we don't get our stations in the right place, it could make a vast effect on their homeowner's insurance if we don't get it right. So, we have to do that. And the third thing I want to come to you with is oh, third thing out of four, I guess.
I'm asking to wrap up your comments. Can I ask if you're making a formal update from the Efficiency Committee to the Board of Selectmen, that you do that in writing and send it to my office?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else present to speak in the room? Anyone online, person to speak? Anyone online going once, going twice? Be an opportunity to enter the meeting. I will reiterate for those who just joined the meeting. Due to an error in posting our meeting, this is an informational meeting. We will be taking no action. All right, I will give you a Selectmen's report. S B C, we have no update. You all are still same place.
We're three more edits have been made and my hope is maybe after this meeting, I'll get an email out to the committee.
Sounds good. Lots of projects. Again, this is the sidewalk project from Hall School to the Mills. Mikey Tomato, who's managing this project, met with D O T today to go over the comments they received back from D O T. After starting the encroachment process, the comments are relatively minor and should require slight revisions to our plan. The next step is to have a hundred percent plan review, meet with Prague. And so, they're targeting mid-October for that meeting. From there, they'll begin the process of contacting three to four property owners that will have thinking associated with the project to begin that conversation. ARPA met today. Again, ARPA is the American Recovery Plan Funds that we received. We haven't met since June, met today again. The Chair did not file an agenda until this morning, so we met just so we could hear some updates and have some conversation. No action was taken during that meeting. And got updates on all our projects. We anticipate closing several projects at our next meeting. Some have not begun and others will be going over the course of the next two years. Our next meeting will be October second at one thirty P M. I just want to update you all on a couple of projects with us. The new generator. I have to need that new generator Public Works completely finished. And we made some upgrades downstairs in this room and then in the upstairs meeting room with project funds for meeting room equipment. You now see a different view if you're watching our meeting, the owl hanging from the ceiling. We have a new television monitor directly across from the table so that all Board and Commission members can see. Therefore, the public can use this monitor for viewing, easy viewing, as easy as it is from across the room. And we had some electrical work done so that we could manage the equipment in the cords, get them safely off the floor, so we no longer have any hazards. So, a big thanks to Public Works for assisting. After our vendors came in and did some work hanging the televisions and getting some other things hooked up. So, upstairs, we didn't get any additional monitors. There's just, you'll see the owl hanging from the ceiling. So, we will take it down when we have events in there, like when the election happens, so that no one runs into it because it's it's right there. You can't miss it. All right. And we, I anticipate in the back of closings for ARPA money, the retention bonus program that was put forth by the Board of Selectmen, which was bonus instant staff, which were given out last December. And then some funds for appreciation event for both town and Board of Ed staff. We did a luncheon at the end of the school year and we did one at the start of the school year, again, for all town and Board of Ed staff. And so, we'll be returning a little over forty-two hundred dollars from that project. Okay. Public Works, we have finally, I'm happy to say, secured a Public Works vehicle that replaces the Director's two thousand and eleven truck. You recall, this was a project from C I P from the twenty-one twenty-two fiscal year. June twenty-two is when we put the order in. And then last December is when it was canceled. We were able to purchase for fifty thousand dollars a twenty twenty-three F three fifty. We had, our planned purchase was a twenty twenty-two F three fifty diesel. We were not able to find a diesel in our price range, but did purchase a gas vehicle. And then the plow was purchased separately using Public Works budgeted funds, snow equipment budgeted funds. So, that was the last vehicle using those leased funds, so we'll be able to close that out. And we took delivery last Wednesday. So, after lots of regular looking, just for your information purposes, and if you haven't looked, you might be, and you are often looking. A diesel was gonna, with the plow, was gonna run us somewhere close to seventy thousand dollars. And we budgeted forty-one. So.
We may do gas.
We may do with gas. So, it's not budgeted for, so there'll be, you know, some adjustment there. And looking to see what we spend over the next few months to try to project what we'll need in a budget going forward. All right, staffing updates. I want to start with the Public Works Director position that's been filled. The Public Works Director Hiring Committee each did issue a report on the process and you both have that and it is in the Selectmen's office. The initial posting was from July eleventh to July twenty-seventh. You recall, I've come to you all and said we didn't, at that time, I'd want to say we had one or two applicants. We extended the opening until it was filled. On August twenty-first, at our meeting, we'd had five applications and we worked to move to begin the interview process. On August twenty-third, we received two additional applications, so we had a total of seven applications for this position. The committee met on August twenty-ninth to review all of the applications and we determined three to be the highest level of qualifications and to interview. Here we go. We did have an electrician in today, so we're working, hanging there. So, we determined that three of those seven applicants to be the highest level of qualifications and to interview them. The interviews were then held on September fifth. Selectman Bullock, who was on the Hiring Committee, was unable to attend, but we continued as we had already had the interviews scheduled. Of the three candidates, one stood out as the most qualified, best experience and most likely to succeed in the role. The group of remaining Selectmen and crew leader, who made up the committee unanimously agreed to select this candidate as the first to be offered the position. All interested parties were given careful consideration and evaluated on the same parameters in both stages and weighed against the job description without favor. All three interviewed parties were given identical questions and the opportunity to ask questions and discuss their interests as well as suitability. The offer was then extended to the unanimous candidate and that was our former Director Troy Spazato and Troy accepted. Now, I want to be as transparent with people as we can and to that end, I want you to know that we didn't make the decision lightly. We held what we feel is a very thorough process. And Troy participated in a typical hiring process. And that the needs of the town guided all of our decisions. So, Troy was brought back to this role with no increase in pay or additional benefits. And I feel confident that the terms negotiated will benefit the town and encourage Troy to remain in employment and be successful so long as both parties agree. And again, there is that report, you both have been, you've been shared that report and it is available in the Selectmen's office. So, I would give Troy the opportunity if he wanted to say anything, share anything.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to come back.
The Assistant Town Clerk position, I think I shared with you all that Rachel Pierce had given her notice. We filled that internally. Ivan, if I say his name right, Runke, who is the current Assistant Transfer Station Operator, will begin next Monday in that role and that will leave an opening for the Assistant Transfer Station position and that posting will close on October third. So, if anyone is interested, you can see our website for application and job description. We still need Recording Secretary for C I P and Board of Finance. If you all know anyone, share with anyone, anyone who's watching our videos, read our minutes. There's a job description and posting on our website. And so, those are our key positions that need to be filled.
Those are two positions.
Two positions, a Recording, no, and a Recording Secretary for C I P and a Recording Secretary for Board of Finance. The Human Services Director position closed on Wednesday afternoon. You both indicated that you wanted to participate in the Hiring Committee. That's still the case? Can you get your availability to me, not to Karen, but to me, A. Staff?
Okay, availability this week?
This week, next week, just give me a couple of weeks out, so we'll have to coordinate everybody, but send it directly to me. And our four-day work week pilot for six months began today. Today was eight to six, the rest of the week, Tuesday through Thursday, is eight A M to four P M. We did sign an M O U with the union that had no significant changes. With the exception of, due to the unique shared service between the town and the Board of Education, the Finance Office was given the option to work four or five days. So, they have the option to individually opt in to four days if they'd like and that could happen quarterly. So, at this point, they're, they've all chosen by the five-day option, but they have that availability to opt in, but it can't happen at any time. It can happen quarterly. And the M O U, just like the pilot, is for six months. It can be extended by agreement, but a discussion will have to be had moving forward. All right, so today was a good day, I will say. And, you know, for a group of folks who aren't used to working Monday mornings. And there was your bright eye, so we look forward to seeing how this transpires. Any questions on my report? All right. Moving right along. Public Works. So, with that, Troy, now you have to speak.
The one T V's out here at the town hall, they moved sand and mulch at Center School, Mulch at Hall School. Fix potholes around town, they clean the garage, they've been constantly cleaning catch bases and tops off with all the rain and the leaves coming down. They moved the tents from Center School. They worked on the railroad crossing signs on Depot Road. The state sent out a letter saying that they needed new railroad signs and paintings. So, the painting hasn't been done yet, but the new signs have been put up. They cut and removed trees with a contractor. Vehicle maintenance has been done. We started grading the dirt roads, weather permitting. We're gonna start getting those hopefully for the winter time. We've installed three new stop signs that were taken down. Cheats are back now, so they're starting to, signs are starting to go missing, so. That, they installed the TV brick downstairs here. They've been backfilling washouts around town. We got ready for the upcoming storm, thankfully it didn't hit us, that's good. And we cleaned up a large dirt spot on Lisker Road that was washing up in the driveway. And the homeowners actually are gonna be paving the driveway, so hopefully that'll be all set. They spoke for chip seal. Chip seal will be done starting Wednesday and Thursday of this week. They will be starting, it'll be on Navarito, The Village, Clint Eldridge, Lustig, Seacare, Miller Farms and Sharp's Mel's Road will be done this year.
Is that all of the roads in that village area?
Yes, that's, yep, that whole.
There's Village Street.
Village Street.
Center Street.
That whole area.
We put out our notice, we get a public notice out, make sure we list all the actual streets.
And you want me to talk about Pulser Road?
I certainly want to talk about Pulser Road. So, when Troy got here, when Troy left, they were preparing to pave Pulser Road. They had done the prep work. The company had come to us with a request from them and about how they believe there needs to be additional materials after evaluation. Recommendations that the road was ready to be paved, was expected to be paved. And they did not come back. And then they were very difficult to get ahold of. We've been trying to speak with them. I spoke with them at the end of August, finally. And they were told then that regardless of what they thought we should do, we had told them to move forward with paving and asked them when a paver could be here. That still didn't happen. Then we hired Troy back and I was very clear with him that his number one priority upon returning was Pulser Road. Because now there was significant damage from a mean left unpaved. And because of a lot of the rain, it's making it very difficult for us to get in with a grader to correct it because then it rains and ruins again, so. Troy spoke, we've been speaking with them and got them out here last week, so if you want to talk about.
So, they came last Thursday with a speech here and kind of scraped up what they could. They said they were gonna bring a grader in Friday. He gave me every excuse, it didn't happen. Today, they didn't bring it in. I spoke with him this morning. He said that they're gonna be here tomorrow and grade Wednesday and Thursday. Or no, sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday and then Monday and Tuesday of next week that is on the schedule to be paved. So, I mean, it's pretty much, we've had some words, so it's hopefully it happens. I mean, it's been a point where it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't happen like that. So, they're bringing process, they have to, and that's gonna be on, that's on the town, so.
But I've already, I've had multiple conversations with our county attorney about what recourse we have in this process and that we're willing to take any and all actions to make sure that the job gets done. If for some reason we had to switch vendors because of this error, then we would be, you know, seeking a correction from this company. So, you know, we certainly would like to be able to complete the work with them and give them the opportunity. They certainly are making it difficult for us and we recognize it's making it difficult for not just the residents on that road, but it is a highly traveled road between Stafford and the highway. And it, I don't know if either of you have been out there, but it's, it was very bad in the spots. And so, called them, we've called them numerous times and then spoke with them while we were out on the road. Not sure they see the same urgency we do, but what they don't want is the legal action that we'd be willing to take if it comes to that. Hopefully, it will be paved next week. Today's rain won't help at all. But it is something that we have been constantly working on many, many obstacles, so.
I told them that our their proposal has a time and money, a period of performance and cost.
Oh, they have, they have a date.
Right, but they have, I assume they have a period of performance in there, right?
Well, usually, I mean, they come in and it's done within that week and most contractors only leave a road that's open for, you know, a month at a time. Usually, they come in and they don't open a road unless their favors and everything is all set behind them.
Because I remember seeing someone propose it for us, then they said, yeah, we'll do it and they put some time limit on it and.
And we recognize that the weather, the weather we've had this summer can cause some of these things to be delayed, but this is not a weather delay. That when they were supposed to come back, Troy was on vacation the week of the twenty-fourth of July and then he was gone from us and had been in communication with them. I, I was out of the office and he'd been in communication with me, so I knew exactly what was supposed to happen when he was no longer in our office. And his crew was ready to be out there and they actually corrected from wrong, were out there a couple of days waiting for them to show up, anticipating paving. And there was not bad weather. So, now they're going to be spending additional dollars that we're not willing to cover because that, that road now needs material. It needs material because of their negligence.
I guess I'm just suggesting that maybe a lesson learned or something like that, make sure we have the time and money part in the bids. You know, so you've got to hold on to say, hey, we could do whatever damages.
Yeah. Yeah, the best part is they sent invoices looking to be paid in full. And as you can imagine, I did not authorize such a payment, absolutely not. You haven't even kind of completed a job. So, I think the same thing they tried to sell Troy on, they tried to sell me on and use that as an excuse. They were waiting for some mystery phone call from some mystery person. But I have no problem setting them straight, so at the end of the day, we want a solid paved road and work with this vendor to do so if we have to move on and seek legal action, we will. So. That's in the works.
How do we get them off the faith bid list?
Obviously, their preferred state contract.
Oh, that's a conversation we had.
That will do us another question.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
It will happen.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking it's also a good learning opportunity for us. Feedback from the state to make sure that I understand the problems with the vendor.
For sure.
Make sure we'll be, when we get the bids, time and money.
I will tell you, I made, there's two businesses in Connecticut with very similar name. And the number I was given was for the other one. But I think the tone in my, in my voicemail made it clear that they called me back immediately and said, I'm not sure what someone has done, but clearly you want to repeat the thumb, it's just not a. And I said, well, good to know that that came across very clearly.
Because they returned their calls.
They returned a whole lot faster than our vendor, that's for sure. So, all right. Public Works, anything else? Public Works?
No, the stormwater that's doing the mapping for us that people was doing, I spoke with Joe this morning. And he said they're about three quarters done and they're hoping within the next few weeks or so to wrap that all.
Okay.
Yep. They had some shortage in staffing, but he said they'll try and get it as wrapped up as fast as they can.
Okay, great. And the.
School field, they are still working on that. There was some other stuff they were waiting for from the mapping that they.
Okay, yeah, and it's such a complex issue. I expect it to take some time.
So, the contract going around, how does that work? They just drop in something in there and figure out where it goes or?
No, no, so every catch basin in town, they're GPSing it, so they'll know exactly location wise and then they're doing they're doing pipe diameter and the outfalls where the pipe goes. So, they're mapping that all out and they'll put it on our G I, G I S system, so then we'll have it as a layer. So, we, anybody can look to say, we, there's a basin here, basin here, basin here on that road.
And that's the requirement.
For example, they'll come and they'll check every basin out, they'll go where it is and then they'll follow it out where the outfall. So, say if you have one that went in the back of your house, they'll measure and say three hundred feet out that there is the out bulk in the water where the water is going. So, that's what they're doing all over town.
Right.
That will add to our compliance.
So, people see, I guess, you know, residents a little nervous about people.
Yeah, they're, they're mark their car.
It's a contractor that's.
They've been working out there for more than six months now.
Yeah, they've been out there for quite a while.
Yeah. All right. The new business items, we had an appointment on tax refunds. We can take no action. We did reach out to that person who's asking to be appointed and they'll let me get to stay home in the rain and join us online if you'd like. Old business, again, no action, but I had shared with you both a draft policy for our Everbridge notifications system. That's for feedback. We've received them.
Sorry, I did review it.
You're not gonna get much feedback from me. I made the draft. Don't wait to hear from you. So, if you, if your comments are that there's no edits.
There was very little edit, but I'm sorry, I didn't get it back to you.
All right, so.
I'll talk that officially in writing.
Please, thank you. Anything else about that, Mike?
Uh, no.
Okay. The potential land purchase, this was the piece on Jared Sparks belonging to the state. Mike was gonna do some follow-up. I will share with you that Mike Tomato and I were speaking about this. And he spoke with someone in the industry about the potential use of that property and what it might bring to the town. And what he shared was that typically cell towers are located about a mile apart currently. Evelyn, in our Land Use Office, reviewed the locations of other towers and found that there's a tower on Talon Turnpike that is point four or five miles away and one on Cosgrove Road. That is.
A mile and.
Point eight, eight miles away. So, there's already two in that area. He did also share that with five G, there's a lot subject to change there. They can only be transmitted a certain distance, but that's still too far off to know that if this land is suitable for that or not. So, that's what I have to share.
So, I have a little bit also.
Great.
I did some group conversations with the Fire Chiefs and I added in Tyler because of his directorship at the Town County ninety-one center. He's very active in the whole radio world all the time. And I don't remember if you fed back any information.
I had asked Tyler respond.
Okay, yeah, there, there was basically from Chief Snyder was, you know, if it has a use, I would certainly support that. I don't know what that would be. That was kind of the conversation. Tyler said, said, made some of the same comments about cellular being sort of a, there's less there's less desire right now for big towers. There's some smaller being put on telephone poles, want major routes to handle the traffic of cell phones moving along those routes. So, it's sort of a hybrid of what's going on right now, so it's hard to tell if there would be value to that. He said, though, the next step would be to do a propagation study, which is a radio consultant says, well, this location at this elevation would cover this much area depending on what frequencies you're using, what system you're using. And he said that the Town County ninety-one center has a consultant that would do that if there was desire to move forward with that. So, basically, at this point, no one's jumping up and down saying, wow, we really want that.
Yeah, there's, there's no real use out there. That's just dreaming.
Considering they offered it to us for free about ten years ago. I don't feel a lot of inspiration to pay four thousand dollars for something that we. I don't feel a lot of inspiration to pay four thousand dollars for something that we could have gotten for free years ago.
Yeah, if somebody had come back, you know, the conversations Mike was having and the things that you were having. And said, look, there's gonna be this use and it's gonna be out there in a year or two, or even five years. We'd snatch this land up right now and hold on to it.
Right, and then you get an opportunity for local, usually when you do that, you get an opportunity to tell the cell phone company. Okay, while you're up there, put up some antennas for our fire departments or our public works or schools or whatever. But that's doesn't seem to be what our situation is at this point, so.
So if you recall, we had, August fourteenth was the date of the letter, we have forty five days to respond if we're interested. Again, we cannot take action, but if the consensus is, we don't really have a use for this, I can easily respond as such.
If they want to pay us four thousand dollars, I think we'd reconsider it.
Alright, I will respond to that letter.
I, the consensus is, it's, I don't see an economic advantage.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I would hope that actually.
Big liability, if we take it.
I see the disadvantage is an advantage, so.
I would hope actually that the, one of the neighboring property owners feels that it's worth it for them when it becomes surplus and the state puts it out for the public. Or however they do it, and, you know, add it to their own property, because of.
What is it, a quarter acre?
Yeah, it's a quarter acre, which is on three sides.
And a border right over there.
I think it's. Two, on two side bordering the same.
Yeah, two sides the same, and the third side is another, but three sides of it, but somebody.
Somebody, so there there might be something, again, the.
And the sides of the road is not the good side.
And no use and liability of the access to it, the steps, the tower, the building. Alright, look at that, let the record show, we all are in consensus of something.
Yeah, so he did not make a decision.
We made a decision. We heard, in lieu of hearing anything, I'm gonna look for. Alright, so that's all that was on our agenda this evening. That brings us to President to Speak.
Can I, could we have, I was just gonna ask if we could have Pete's on to finish the stuff he has.
I was gonna ask that same.
And I would, well, he raised his hand, so. So I will ask you to identify yourself for the record and limit your comments.
I don't, I'm gonna try to limit my comments. Pete Tanaka, one twenty five Mason Road, representing the Emergency Services Efficiency Committee. The only thing that I ask, on the previous thing, when you were discussing the emergency notification policy. Is that we were also discussing that because it falls under the FEMA standard IS two forty seven dot B. And so we need to make sure we're in line with federal standards. That's one thing, the second thing that's that's probably more important is that in our committee, we came to a consensus, not a vote. But it was the full consensus of the committee, that we come to the to the board of selectmen and ask you if you would please approach the town. Uh, town manager on their scheduling of their fire department, they've got many more. Full time firefighters than we do, and we were their first responders on Labor Day for three calls, they had nobody on duty. They've rarely had people on duty on weekends and holidays and at night. So the town of Wellington, which is much smaller and has a smaller staff, has been covering their calls at a much higher rate than they're coming to us. So we're asking that if they could, if you could approach them and have them sort their their schedules somewhat, thank you.
Thank you. I see, again, it's a formal report from you. I see a hand up online, oh, welcome back here. I see a hand up online, Stuart, if you can identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to two minutes. You should unmute yourself. You need to unmute yourself, you you are muted, you need to unmute.
That's, that works. Stuart Fisher, sixty five Blais Road. Wellington taxpayer and Democratic candidate for first selection. I. I thank Mike for working on that study. But I am concerned that we need to be expedient on doing Station One repairs to get it ready for winter. And we're spending time talking about research studies for a new firehouse. Well, I'm a little concerned that we need to be acting on getting that firehouse ready for winter to make sure that the town is safe. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you.
First, thank you, Alex Moore, chief of the local fire department, and thank you for those that did show up a couple of weeks ago and did the walkthrough and meeting at the station. This week, we are gonna try to get the drainage, at least for the downspouts running. We were able to get the front one freed up, the back is a whole other story. We are also working on plans, we will be meeting with the board of finance Thursday night to be able to put one person back at that station. Outside in a trailer, we cannot keep the second person at the stout station. So we are working on accommodation, we're going to do that. So we will be meeting with the board of finance on Thursday. We do have prices for them for trying to get the station polarized and create up the money, the remainder of the money, so.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else present to speak that has not spoken? I will say, we haven't seen anything formal, there's someone that just certainly came to speak, present to speak, so we get a formal request for something, we'll look at what and if those items. Include before we, before I really delve into it and have a discussion about it, so.
Can I just make a comment on something, because we couldn't vote, we couldn't add to the agenda. And I just wanted to comment that I brought, I'll I'll leave it with you two, I should have brought two copies, I'm sorry, I don't know why I printed one. This is a sample statement of work that goes along with the efficiency committee's request for the study. I'll leave, Jim, if you don't mind, I'll email you, want to leave this one with Erica?
What we'll do is we'll include it, if we put this on the agenda, we discuss it and I'll put it in the package to take a look at it.
It's it's just a sample to help sort of indicate what that work would be.
Alright, seeing no other requests for President to speak. And move on to good and welfare. The ever popular report from Troop C in August, we had two hundred and fifty three total calls for service. Yeah, I'm just writing it to last one, five accidents, five criminal investigations, zero burglaries, zero larcenies. One hundred and sixty seven non reportable matters and seven arrests. Total motor vehicle enforcement, there were fifty seven total traffic stops, one onsite DUI, two arrests, zero misdemeanors, thirty seven infractions. Five written warnings and twelve verbal warnings. Once again, I will remind folks, we, I have ongoing conversations with. Folks at the troop, the commander, as well as our aides on about how to handle different issues, speeding issues in town. ATV and dirt bike issues, which is a significant concern across the states. About how we can handle that, so what I will say to folks as far as ATVs and dirt bikes, if you know who they are. Reach out to the troop, share any photos, videos, and who those individuals are. So hopefully they can have a conversation and start there for some kind of enforcement. We have, in the past, we have a problem here, just like they do on every other street, when it becomes. Nice outside, and we've called the troop, and what we get is by the time they get here, there's nobody here, we don't know who they were, so we don't know what is happening. So any information you can share and pass along, gather that and do so. Mobile food share is here at the town office building, it will be next Wednesday, September twenty seventh, at eleven AM. A reminder, this is back to the original model pre COVID, where it's a walk up model. Residents will bring their own bags, up park and then approach the truck. It is open to Wellington residents as well as other residents across the state of Connecticut, but you do have to be onsite to take advantage. So you cannot gather food for, you know, I couldn't go out and get two or three bags for neighbors. There are other things that we can assist with if there are people who are homebound, if someone cannot get out of their vehicle. That is something that we can assist with, they can, that a bag can be taken from the food truck to them, but this is food shares. Criteria, not the town of Wellington's, that you have to be onsite. So they made some changes that were in effect from COVID, going back to their original model.
But there is a mechanism to get it to those people who can't come.
If we have people who can't come, they certainly should be reaching out to our human services department, and there are other avenues that we can work with. And and we have available to us to help folks in need, so absolutely. But the the problem is things were happening in a way over three years of COVID, and so just like that, it stopped and food shares really cut back. And some of it's they just don't have an unlimited supply of food that they've had in the past, so. I'll remind folks to continue to support our small businesses and restaurants. We do anticipate a soft open of the new. Facility in Phelps Plaza, which is recreational marijuana. That dispensary is anticipated to be opening in the coming weeks, a soft open, and so. Be advised of that, and it would be treated no different than any other business of its kind. I'll remind folks the new office hours of the town office building, again, Mondays, eight AM to six PM, and Tuesday through Thursday, eight AM to four PM, and closed on Fridays. And September thirtieth is the car show on the green. So come on out for a good cause, you can see our website for more information.
The veterans event on the twenty.
Oh, yeah, sorry, and we have a veterans event that we are partnering with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. To honor Vietnam era vets, so we reached out to those, I think to date, we're at eighty one. Eighty two, respondees, and that's not all veterans, that's them, their families, any any guests that they. Want to come out here, so we are thrilled to have the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Put this program together and partner with them, so September twenty fifth, Hall School at five PM, the next Monday.
Any thoughts to that?
What, no, so it's it's an event for, it's a free event for veterans, those veterans free, we're both set an invitation. So we anticipate some of our federal delegation, maybe being that they were being invited to get the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Alright, seeing no other business before us and no action we can stake, I will call this meeting adjourned at seven thirteen.
I concur.
We're done.
Karen, I forwarded you, I just emailed you that.